So I'm. I'm gonna get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Bloomfield Board of Education's regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 8th. It is seven o'clock. My name is Donald Harris. I am the Chair of the Board of Education. Let the record show that we have Mr. Fryben. Mr. Wilkinson is feeling ill tonight, but Mr. Ike is here. Mrs. Easeman is here. Mr. Moore is here. Ms. Bogalasa guy is here. So we have six out of seven. We do have a quorum. And I invite you to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America.
of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
for all.
Thank you. Mr. Fryben, would you read our opening statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Bluefield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As a Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individual management. It's responsibility of the superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Bluefield Public School. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fryben. Number four on our agenda, we're gonna take them one at a time. Item A, Approval of the Minutes, a special meeting February 15th, 2022. Mr. Fryben? Mr. Fryben?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 15th, 2022 special Board meeting as presented.
Again.
Thank you, Mr. Ike. Any issues of correction? That need to be made? Corrections, omissions? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is approved. Item B, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting, February 24th, 2022. Mr. Fryben?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 24th, 2022 special Board meeting as presented.
Again.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt Chair? Through you.
Thank you, Mr. Ike. Go ahead, Ms. Bogalasa guy.
We just voted on on the minutes from the 15th. I was not present there. I would like to abstain from that vote, please.
Oh, you're welcome. I apologize for not asking for extensions. You are correct. Thank you. We are February 24th. Any corrections? Omissions? Errors of any sort? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item number five, presentation. Our student reps for tonight come to us from JEM's Academy. And student reps are Sharika, Lewis Jones, and Joshua Spencer. Welcome.
Good evening, Board of Education and community members.
Good evening. You have the floor, sir. Okay.
Sorry, sorry, everyone. Evening. Before we get started, we want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Global Experience Magnet School. We hope that you enjoy the presentation that we've prepared for you tonight. Next slide, please. Go back one, sorry. Good evening. My name is Sharika Lewis Jones, and I'm from East Hartford, Connecticut. I'm a 10th grader at Global Experience Magnet School, and I've been here since sixth grade. I'm a class representative for our school's government and treasurer of NHS. This is my second time presenting in front of the school board, and I'm currently taking college courses at Capital Community with the school's partnership program. Next slide, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Spencer. I'm from Blueville, Connecticut. I'm currently a 10th grader here at JEM, and I've been here since the sixth grade. This is my second time presenting in front of the Board of Education. We are hoping you enjoyed this presentation about what we are doing at JEM. Next slide, please.
NHS tutoring has begun. We had upperclassmen tutoring middle school students, and it has been very successful. The National Honor Society students are prepared and ready to help students with any assignments in which they may be struggling. Next slide, please.
JEM students participated in a dress down day sponsored by the Student Council. Students and staff greeted each other with roses and a special note of appreciation all in support of Valentine's Day and JEM spirit. Next slide, please.
In an effort to improve student access to great reading material, JEM has placed a small bookcase of books in the school cafeteria. Students of all grade levels have been able to choose a book and keep it if they'd like. We are looking forward to adding more bookknocks throughout the school. Next slide, please.
During Black History Month, student and staffs have the opportunity to increase their knowledge by learning about the historical figures and institutions that have been instrumental in America. The door decorating activity was a great way to begin discussions and answering questions while bonding with students during Black History Month. Next slide, please.
JEM Society is a school-based honor society that recognizes students who actively work towards bettering themselves academically and socially. Students that maintain quarter grades of 85% and above in each class, as well as serving as a role model for peers while being an active member of the JEM's community are accepted. Each quarter, these students are awarded many different ways listed above. The Ruby Level students listed here will be awarded with the Dress Down Day, and the Emerald Level students will be awarded with the Dress Down and Special Breakfast Day within the next few weeks. Next slide, please.
The JEM senior class is starting to make decisions about their postgraduate plans. Our top two seniors have officially committed to Central Connecticut State University with large academic scholarships. Other seniors have been accepted to many schools, also with scholarships, and are looking to make final decisions once they hear back from more schools. Here is a list of more colleges that students are weighing their options for. Next slide, please. In review, JEM students are a caring and supportive group. They continue to share random acts of kindness. Many of them are done without anyone knowing. Here, a group of students use a sticky note to encourage students during midterms. Every single locker was dressed with a personal note.
Thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions, we would be happy to address them now.
Thank you, Sharika and Joshua. Questions from the Board?
Yeah, Mr. Kevin. Just wanna commend, I guess she's a sophomore. She's taking college-level classes at Capital. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna beat that junior and senior year? That is excellent. Congratulations to you. That's something. I never heard a sophomore taking college-level classes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say, great presentation as always. Thank you for coming back. Glad to have you back again. And I'm really happy to hear that we're still doing some random acts of kindness. Lord knows we need more kindness in the world, so I'm glad you guys are doing that. Thanks again for the presentation.
Any other Board comments? Okay, my appreciation to you both and to your principal for giving you the opportunity to come forward and and I wish you nothing but the best for the rest of the year. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5B, Recognition of John Robinson. Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson and Mr. Guzman. You're muted.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, families in our viewing audience, joining us virtually. I'm honored to recognize John Robinson, Director of Technology in Human Resources Coordinator, who will be retiring on April 1, 2022. I commend John for his outstanding leadership during his tenure in Bluefield. He has been instrumental in navigating the district through this pandemic, both in delivering necessary technology tools to students and staff, and his communications to the Bluefield community. Over the years, John has worn many hats in pioneering new ways of conducting business, including updating protocols and resources for our district. John, once again, thank you for your outstanding leadership. We truly wish you in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Bill? This is another time where I really wish we were in person. And but let me lead it off. John, I can't say thank you enough for all that you have done for the school system, for the administration. For me personally, an old guy that this technology sometimes just don't work, and I gotta, I have to call John Robinson to bail me out or to help me out how to do this, how to do that, how to do the other thing. And he's always there and does it with a smile. So I'm gonna miss you, John, but enjoy, enjoy your retirement. You have deserved it, my friend. Mr. Fryben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, you hear me laughing. John, all I can ever say is continuously, thank you. I have bothered you so often over the years, asking how to do this or that, and I thank you for always coming to my rescue. You've been a great friend, and you will be sorely missed. And hopefully you'll come back and visit us at some times, but I want to wish you all the best in your retirement and just have some relaxing days, and I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Ms. Easeman?
Oh, Mr. Robinson. Thank you so much for putting up with the endless phone calls and emails. He's been putting up with me since my son was in kindergarten. He's now a sophomore in high school, so John has been a very patient person and very, very helpful. So glad to, you know, be on the same team as you. John, you've been just so great, such a help. I don't even know what else to say. It's a well-deserved retirement. Have fun. You know, don't look back. Just keep moving ahead and enjoying that retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Ike?
Congratulations, Mr. Robinson. You've done a yeoman's job. Well, first you were just handling technology, then you came on board and took over the Human Resources. It was seamless. You're the man, especially when we had that hearing that time. I kept pressing you. I kept pressing you. You said, we read the riot act. We did what we were supposed to do. We covered ourselves. You did an outstanding job. Wish you the best. It'll be hard to find somebody to replace you at your level and for to stream from one job to the other. You were outstanding. All the best, Mr. Robinson.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Robinson, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm sorry I didn't get the chance to really know you, but I know I've seen you around. I wish I had gotten to know you, but everything that I hear about you is that you are one special person. I guess that's my loss not getting to know you, but I want to just wish you the best. I hope you the best of everything.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, is that it, Dr. Thompson?
That's it for now.
Okay. It's now time for public PTO comment. Just to remind anybody that would like to come forward, your viewing or listening device must have a microphone for two-way communication. Everyone who wishes to speak wished to leave a comment, you can either type your comments or you can stand forward and speak. If you have the microphone, when I recognize you after giving us your name and your address, you will be allowed to speak for two minutes. Is there anyone for public comment? I'm looking at Lynn, Lynn Weisel. Give us your name and address and
Hi, good evening. Lynn Weisel, 17, Maple Edge Drive. I have started attending meetings since the pandemic started, and I wanted to thank the Board of Ed and Dr. Thompson for your leadership during this pandemic. My son started in kindergarten when the pandemic hit and continued virtually and has had such a good experience that he says now that he doesn't want to leave Laurel. It's been to the point that he feels so comfortable. His teachers have made him feel so loved, and I know that that has not been the experience for every parent in other districts, so I just wanted to say thank you. I in particular wanted to thank his first-grade teachers and just recognize them. His first-grade teachers, Mrs. Peters and Mrs. Virtue had chickens, hatched chickens in the middle of the pandemic and made what was kind of a crazy year very normal. And this year, his teacher, Mrs. Schuster, every, I know this is kind of a small thing, but every student writes a page celebrating the other students' birthdays, and so on their birthday, they take home a whole book of things that other students appreciate about them. So I just want to thank you for shepherding us through this and just know that it's appreciated, and I would just like to thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Weisel. Any other comments, public comments? Any other public comments? I'm looking at Jenny Kelly.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I've lived in Bluefield for a long time. My father owned a pharmacy. I think some of you might remember it. Jenny Kelly, I think you said it.
And your
31, 31 High Hill.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm just gonna talk about the mask mandate issue. So I think you guys know 95% of Connecticut's school districts have lifted the mandate. The Bluefield decision to maintain it is, I think, in company with Hartford, New Haven, and Bridgeport, which are actually low-performing school districts. Higher-performing districts like West Hartford, Farmington, Sims, very Encantad, they've lifted. The first time the Board voted, they based their decision on a mid-February survey, which less than a third of the parents had responded to. It was an open link, so actually anybody with the link, whether you were in Bluefield or any other town, you could vote, and you could vote multiple times. So I don't, I would question the validity of that survey, especially being used as the only data point in deciding to maintain the mandate. In the second meeting, most of the reasoning that was gone to continue the mandate was, the reasoning that was used were more administrative things like, oh, teachers can enforce the mask, things that would not change whether it was repealed tomorrow, which I urge you to do, or whether it was March 31st. And I'm speaking as a longtime teacher, things that are just not gonna change regardless of the date. New studies emerge constantly about how masks don't stop spread in school, and they're harmful for students, they're harmful for their education, especially low-income students, students who struggle with reading, students who struggle with speech delays. I'm speaking on behalf of many friends who are in the Bluefield school systems whose children are struggling. They're struggling with speech delays, special ed teachers struggling to hear their students speak through their masks. And again, we are in company with Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, and two other towns, not great company to keep this mandate. Given the urgency of the situation, I would hope, and the devastation of parents, I would hope that the Board put forth a motion tonight where they repeal the mandate. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Slavens?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please, your name and your address, please.
Yep, Tom Slavens. I'm at Sixth Waverly Way in East Granby. My daughter goes to Winston Berry Early Education Center. I, Jenny made some excellent points there, and I wanted to follow up and beseech the the Board here to reconsider the mask mandate on our children. With the lifting of the federal emergency and the mandates from the government, we're really out of sync with what the recommendations are. When the recommendations came down from the CDC, we all followed it, right? So the mask went on and the mandates were put into place. How are we now going out of step with all of the recommendations from our government agencies for this type of control over the kids? Having a neuroscience background, this is extremely harmful for our young children. My daughter herself is three years old and is in a world where folks are covered up all outside, right? She's not making those connections at her school like my son did when he was three. She's having those speech delays. I mean, any more time that we leave our kids in these masks or force them to live under this state of fear is going to have long-lasting effects well into their adulthood. I would really ask the council to, one more time, take a look at this and just coincide with the CDC recommendations like we did at the very beginning of this whole pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavens. Mr. Roy?
Hi, good evening. Tony Roy. I live at 12 Noel Road. I have been living in town for probably about 12 years, and I've been, I actually work in district as well. I work at Global Experience Magnet School. You saw two of my students that actually are in my class currently present this evening. I thought they did a wonderful job, so I just wanted to say that really quickly. And the thing that's been really amazing is the amount of resiliency that they've shown through these past two years. And I've actually been asking a lot of my students, what do they think? I've talked to a lot of the parents that we have in our school. What did they think about the mask mandate? And they're actually very relieved that we waited for another few weeks to lift this mask mandate because they felt that it was just a little bit too soon to lift it before the March 31st date that was already set. They were feeling that, why not just wait just a couple more weeks to see how things play out? As you can see, the students I work with are a little bit older, right? They're in the high school age, so maybe they're not having some developmental issues that we're seeing at these younger grades. But I can tell you that I have to say that Dr. Thompson and team have done a tremendous job, a remarkable job, staying ahead of the curve, right? Each time, it was a cautious way of moving through mask mandates or what have you. And I just thought it's been, it's been really tremendous. We only have several weeks left or a couple weeks left, excuse me, and I'm very happy with the way that things have been going, not only from a teacher perspective, but my own personal perspective and also the perspective of the students in which I serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Angel Panther?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir. My name is Angel Panther from Sixth Waverly Way.
Thank you. Please go see.
Thank you. I have a child at Winston Berry, and one of my concerns I'm sorry. I have a daughter at Winston Berry, and one of my main concerns is that she comes home every day with a headache, and I know this is contributed to by wearing a mask. She's three, so she has very limited speech, and it's been quite delayed. Been very concerned about her development. One of the things is, we have a son that's older, and he is had multiple problems with wearing masks. He has asthma. It's hard for him to breathe. It's been very difficult. I'm not as eloquent as the speakers before me, and I could probably sit here and send you a ton of statistics and papers that I've read, which I hope that, you know, you have done your due diligence as well and read those. But as a parent, I know I don't want to take masking away from anyone. I think every parent needs to make that choice. That's best for their child, most definitely. And anyone that wants to wear a mask definitely should. They may have health reasons. They may have individuals at home, but I know that there are several children that have reasons, health-wise and others, that should be able to have their parents make that choice for them. Their best as a parent, we have the best interest of our child at heart. No one else is going to have a better interest in that than us. I think moving to mass choice immediately would be a very fair and reasonable thing to do. I think we've seen around the country that we haven't seen huge outbreaks in areas that in schools that have been going maskless all year. Anyway, I would just like the Board to consider it again. And I would like my daughter to come home one evening and not tell me that her head hurts or it ouches. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, we are moving on Superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson?
Okay, tonight, we recognize the Board of Education members in honor of Connecticut Board of Education Appreciation Month. This annual event provides a perfect opportunity to thank each of you for your hard work and dedication to our school district. The work of a Board member is a time-consuming process that requires significant effort devoted to the business of effective governance. Your leadership has been instrumental in all that has been achieved. Board members, as a token of our appreciation for your commitment to the families and students of Bloomfield Public Schools, we would like to present you with a book aligned to our work in honoring the culture and history of African-Americans. The book, The Black Apollo of Science, The Life of Ernest Everett Jest, will be delivered to your homes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And as aside to that book author, Ernest book author, Ernest Everett Just is a, uh, one of four founders of my fraternity, Omega Sci-Fi fraternity. So, uh, thank you, doubly thank you.
Welcome. And, uh, I, I wanna continue, uh, with student recognition. And I would like to congratulate Conalisa Coleman, a senior at Bloomfield High School, who has been selected the twenty-twenty-two Connecticut Distinguished Young Women Award winner. Started in nineteen fifty-eight, Distinguished Young Women runs a national scholarship program that inspires high school girls to develop their full potential, continue their education and prepare for a successful future. As part of the award, Conalisa has earned a five hundred dollar college scholarship. And she will be eligible for other scholarships from the program. Gifted and talented. Bloomfield Talent and Gifted Program provides services to students in grades three through eight and professional development for teachers. At the November board meeting, the program's vision and timeline for completion was shared. As of today, the program is at its implementation stage. I'm excited about that, folks. And to date, the district has completed ninety percent of the student assessments in grades four through eight. Now, staff meetings focus on the assessment, identification and nomination procedures and implemented curriculum work in the classrooms. I would like to reiterate, the district is not only providing a pull-up program, but a whole school enrichment program. Emery Cullen, curriculum specialist, enter team, will share further details this evening. And, uh, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any, uh, questions for, uh, Dr. Thompson? Okay. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and, uh, good evening to, uh, members of the Board of Education. Uh, this report, uh, financial report is as of March third, twenty twenty-two and represents two-thirds of the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. At this time, approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars for one point three four percent of the adopted budget has yet to be expended or encumbered. On the one-page summary report before you, you will note that two major object accounts have deficits at this time. Zero-two non-certified salaries has a deficit of approximately fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And account zero-eight tuition has a deficit of approximately eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. With respect to account zero-two, non-certified salaries, you will note that on pages one and two. So if you go to page one of the six-page report, you will note that there are, uh, on this page, two, uh, accounts that are over budgeted by approximately ten thousand dollars. Uh, these are, uh, account one-two-two-zero, salaries for tutors is over expended because of additional English language learner tutors that have been required for educational purposes during the fiscal year. Account one-two-three-zero, salaries for par professionals is over expended because of additional special education powers that have been required during the fiscal year for one-on-one student needs. On page two of the six-page report, you will see account one-two-nine-zero, overtime support is over expended because of custodial and maintenance overtime. Custodian overtime is due to staffing shortages for medical and workers' compensation matters and the inclement weather we've had during the year so far. Maintenance overtime at this point is also due to inclement weather that we've have, uh, experienced over the last several months. On page four of the six-page report, you'll, you'll see account, major account tuition, which we have spoken about, um, over the last several months, uh, remains and continues to be over budgeted because of additional special education students attending out-of-district placements and additional forty-nine students attending magnet schools that we had not projected at the beginning of the school year. So that, that deficit in account zero-eight continues. Um, and we will continue to monitor these accounts, monitor these accounts as well as all other accounts throughout the remaining months of the fiscal year. Mr. Harris, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Uh, any questions from the board? Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Guzman, one quick question. With, uh, fuel costs going up so drastically in the last several days, weeks, will that have any type of effect on, on transportation, uh, operations, anything that you might foresee?
Well, certainly.
Might affect our budget?
Yeah, certainly something we're gonna have to monitor relative to the, uh, the bus, uh, diesel fuel that we purchase in terms of that cost in particular is the one that, uh, that remains, uh, foremost, um, in our, in our review of the, uh, coming months. So that is, uh, that is an account that we have to be very mindful of.
Thank you.
Mrs. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I was just wondering if we, um, and I had mentioned this before, but I think it was in a workshop, not in this forum here. But, um, what are we doing to, um, keep our students here instead of going to the magnet schools? And, and are we, you know, reaching out to find out why they left or reaching out before they leave to say, hey, I know you're thinking about this, but, you know, uh, what can we do, um, to keep, you know, your child here? Um, are we reaching out at all to just kinda, uh, find out what we can do in terms of keeping the students here instead of having them go to, uh, magnet schools and out of district?
You know, let me go onto that and Bill and others you can value add. But, uh, to answer your question, yes, we are starting our, uh, strategies back up. We did, um, after we started the pandemic, uh, that put a lot of things on hold. And what I would like to say is that maybe at our next upcoming, uh, one of our committee meetings, we can give you a full report on what those efforts look like and also, um, you know, some data relative to how successful we were prior to the pandemic. And I think we have a lot in terms of our marketing going forward. We have a lot to offer parents when they're confronted with that decision. Do I keep my child or my children in Bloomfield Public Schools? Or do I, uh, opt out to crack or some other opportunity like that? So, um, we want to have to share with the board at our upcoming, uh, if maybe not this one, but the following, uh, committee being what that whole process, that whole initiative looks like.
Because
Thank you.
And that, and additionally, because this is not, uh, something that's just being done now. I mean, this is, uh, process and procedures that have been going on for years. Uh, because we're not just now experiencing it, although it has slowed down dramatically. Um, and we're less and less kids are going out, but, and we've got more kids coming back in. But it's still, the number is still too high. All right, so, uh, you know, it's a good question, good question, isn't it? And, uh, and, uh, Dr. T will give us a full, uh, bone explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ike?
Mr. Chairman, so I had just three issues. I guess I'm number one, I wasn't, Mr. Easeman. I guess even with that, I guess I'm, you hear rumblings, even with that Sheffield O'Neill, the New Hope settlement, it could get worse in terms of our payout to the magnet schools, maybe more students owing to these magnet schools. I know you're talking about Hartford and in other places that are gonna be experienced. Um, uh, a big hit. I don't know how that's gonna affect Bloomfield in the future, maybe not today. Secondly, uh, Mr. Guzman, uh, on the utility issue, could you just give a brief discussion how we purchase our utilities? Is it, um, not just the fuel, but the, but the, um, electricity, um, the natural gas? I think, uh, across the world, people are in a quandary as, as to the state of utilities at this moment. Uh, do we do wholesale with the state and with the town?
We have, uh, we, we have cooperative purchasing. Uh, we, there's, there's several avenues that we, uh, take for cooperative purchasing. There's many initiatives out there. Uh, one is with, uh, uh, Crick actually has a corporate, uh, a cooperative purchasing, uh, avenue that we participate in. Uh, there are certainly others, uh, anytime there's a, an opportunity to join the ranks with other school districts, other cooperatives or, uh, such as, um, such as, uh, Crick, uh, we, we join and participate in that. Um, the, uh, one of the, uh, initiatives that we should talk about in terms of electricity, you know, we've had solar panels in the district, uh, for several years now, and, uh, that, that results in reduction of our electrical, uh, payments on an annual basis, not only for the panels that are in the, uh, behind the Board of Education facility, but the ones that are, uh, installed on top of the A-Race, uh, facility, A-Race School. Those generate annually, uh, savings to the district of eighty thousand dollars. Uh, not only from the, uh, the bill, but also the, the leasing of the land that we have, um, on an annual basis. And, and we, we incorporate that savings in the budgets that we put together. So those, uh, and that has to do with, um, uh, the electrical accounts. But whenever we get an opportunity, we join forces with other cooperative agencies, um, to, uh, to take advantage of, uh, buying in bulk, if you will.
Uh, do we have an emergency plan, Mr. Guzman?
Emergency plan, what respect?
Relative to, uh, steep rise in, in, in costs of utilities. Or is just, uh, just become another deficit in the account, we have to find the money to fund those accounts.
Well, right now.
As we go, go into the last quarter of the school year.
Yeah, like I said before, we have to monitor these accounts, uh, the volatility of some of these accounts currently, something that we have to monitor and make sure that, uh, we stay within our budget. And at this particular point, we aim to stay within our budget.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Moore?
Um, my question is very, is very simple. Probably going alongside, um, the next question. But basically, I think the last time I asked about trade schools and I know, um, it was mentioned that they would be, um, that the kids could be sent out to, um, Prince Tech and, um, I think it was Chaney. But if we was to bring that back to our schools, I understand it would, it would be a, an expensive cost. But we don't have any idea what that cost would be or anything. I'm, sometimes I'm just looking at.
You're talking about a, uh, for us to recreate, recreate what they do at Prince Tech or Chaney?
Um, basically we keep out to keep our kid, keep our kids here, rather than send them out to Chaney or Prince Tech. Cause I mean, there's a lot of kids that, you know, like interested in carpentry, interested in automotive and, you know, woodworking, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that we send them out to, I'm, I'm glad they have somewhere to go, don't get me wrong. But at the same time, if we can keep them here and, and, and bring those things back here, I think it would be, um, beneficial. But given, provides them the cost, I mean, I, you know, we need to look at stuff.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I hear you. I'm, uh, I'm trying to figure out how best to answer that, uh, question. Um, cause I mean, I was in the school system when we had automotive. We had, uh, wood shop, we had, uh, metal shop. But, uh, we had a vibrant, uh, uh, work-study program, but that was the extent of it. That's not, uh, nearly what's present at Chaney or Prince Tech. So, I mean, we had students who had the benefit of those, uh, programs right within the high school that were still going to Prince Tech and Chaney because, uh, we can't offer all of that. Because that's, that is, uh, that's what they do. So, I mean, we can, we can certainly bring automotive back. Uh, we could perhaps bring, uh, metal back and perhaps bring, uh, wood shop back. But, uh, not a heck of a lot beyond that, so.
So, I, 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 I understand everything can't, can't come back. But I, I think if we can bring some things back, it would, it would be helpful. And maybe, you know, maybe we need to talk to our parents and to our children. And basically, I mean, you know, we seem to be doing surveys. So maybe just take surveys and find out exactly what it is that they maybe want back at the high school or at the schools.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Mr. Moore's question?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moore, we recently hired a, a new teacher in the VoAD program, Mr. Bray. Uh, Mr. Bray is bringing back, uh, so his background is in VoAD, uh, mechanics. So he's gonna be doing, um, he's already doing small engine repair, uh, getting back to the, uh, shop to do, um, some automotive repair. Uh, his plans are to expand into, uh, welding and other very practical experiences for kids. Um, to, to bring those back, maybe not, um, like wood shop, metal shop. You know, it, it's, you know, as I had growing up, but bring back more of that hands-on, you know, the, uh, related to agriculture. So, you know, whether it's, uh, things in plumbing, hydraulics, small engine repair, welding, all those types of things. Uh, and he's in the process of building that program with, um, Ms. Edward Sasan over at the AgroScience.
Okay, but even that's being done on a magnet school basis because the agro-science is, uh, another magnet school we're in, uh, with other school districts. You know, because, uh, we just don't have, we don't have the numbers just at Bloomfield High School to support that. Other questions? Okay, moving on to old business. Talented and gifted update, uh, Ms. Coleman?
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Good evening, Dr. Thompson, Chairman Harris, Board of Ed members and listening audience. Tonight, we will be presenting an update on our talented and gifted program. We are very excited to share with you what has been going on. Um, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, um, we have assessed over six hundred and seventy students in our grades four through eight. We've held numerous, numerous staff meetings, um, with our staff. We've, um, explained how we are identifying students, nominating students. And, um, tonight we'll be sharing some of the enrichment activities, um, and the development of our curriculum. You will hear all of this shortly, um, and we will begin with a testing update from Ms. Richardson. Next slide.
Everyone, I'm Ms. Richardson. I am one of the two talented and gifted teachers. I will be working closely with Global Experience Magnet School and Carmen A. Race Middle School. And my counterpart, Ms. Pascon, will be working with Metacoma and Carmen A. Race Intermediate. So, um, we're gonna give you a testing update. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so we have, um, assessed all students, um, at Case and also at CAMHS. We are just about done with Metacoma. We have two more classes to assess and that will happen tomorrow morning. Um, Jims is pretty much done. We have about a dozen students who are absent and will be, um, scheduled for makeups. And we are in the middle of sending out a parent to our, um, sorry, a letter to our parents of remote students to organize a test date for those students. Uh, those students or the parents of those students can choose between, um, onsite administration where we will, uh, make sure that social distance is, uh, make sure that social distance is in, in place, or they can opt to wait, uh, until next year when, um, in-person learning resumes for their students. Next slide. Okay, so as you've heard a few times, there are, uh, six hundred and seventy students in grades four through eight. And, uh, Jeanne and I have personally went into every classroom that those students are in to administer the assessment. So we really wanted to make this experience as, um, easygoing as possible for the teachers. We didn't, didn't want to add anything extra to their plate. So with their support, we administered the assessment to their students and they were in the classroom to help with monitoring. Um, as you can see, the percentages, we have a lot of hundred percent. Metacoma will probably be very close, if not hundred percent tomorrow. And, um, everything else is as stated, we just have a few makeups and scheduling for the, um, other grades. Oh, and then the last thing I want to mention is that third grade is not included in those numbers because third grade will be assessed in the spring. And on a ongoing basis, they will be the only, uh, grade that's assessed and that will happen every year in the spring. All right, next slide. All right, and these are just some, um, pictures. These are some of the students at Jim's, uh, e- either during their test or right after their test. Um, students overall throughout all buildings were very cooperative. Um, it seemed like the basis of their, um, cooperation was to just to make sure that they were focused and that they, um, they, they did their best. All right, next slide. All right, so now we'll get into the identification process, which we are in the middle of, right? The assessments were the first piece of it, and then I'll talk through, um, a few other, um, components. We'll go to the next slide. All right, so how are we identifying students? So teachers are our main go-to for nomination. So if teachers just from their classroom observations have a gut instinct that this student goes above, above and beyond, has demonstrated gifted qualities, um, thinks outside of the box, is very creative and commits to task. Then those are the types of students we want to encourage teachers to nominate. There is a second way that students can be nominated and it's not based on teacher recommendation. It's if their score is high enough. So we're looking for scores of one twenty or above, but that's not a deciding factor. We have several components that we'll speak about in a minute that we, um, consider when, um, nominating and giving an offer to students. But the reason why we do want to look at every student one twenty and above, because what you might find is that a student isn't really, um, showing academic strengths, but they may have artistic, um, musical or some other domain. And so we don't want to leave them out. We want to at least have a conversation to see in what ways the tag program can support that student or the teacher in the classroom. Um, the next piece of it is the actual Power School form. That's a nomination form. We have trained over forty teachers in the district on how to fill this out. It's in Power School. So everyone, all teachers can access it and there is some characteristic checklist. And there's also an optional, um, portion, which is a student portfolio. So if teachers really want to sell the student or really just highlight their strengths, then they might attach some of the students' work, some artifacts, some documents for us to look at when we are at the nomination. All right, next slide. Okay, so this is one example of, um, well, this actual scale is in the Power School form in a very user-friendly way. Teachers can click on the boxes to tell us which traits they have observed from students. So there's four categories, exceptional ability to learn, exceptional application of knowledge, creative, productive thinking, motivation to succeed. They would only check off the traits that they've observed and then those boxes in each category, that's to give a overall rating. So overall, um, how often is this, a student demonstrating these qualities, right? One would be rarely all the way up to four, that would be consistently. All right, next slide. Okay, and this is another check. This is a checklist that's inside of the form where teachers can check off which traits, uh, they have noticed in those students. So we have on the left-hand side, upright child checklist, and on the right-hand side, we have gifted learner. Um, we like to see more things in the gifted learner realm, just because this is the student that kind of take initiative, go above and beyond, they're highly curious and they're looking for more than what sometimes the standard curriculum provides. All right, next slide. Okay, so now we get into the part where students have been nominated, teachers filled out their form, and now we need to get together as a committee. And we need to decide as a group if we are going to offer that child, uh, a spot in the program. And so in the nomination committee, we would have the tag team, um, the teacher who nominated the student. And we would have, um, the psychologist and the guidance counselor. And we would carefully review several factors, as I've mentioned before, there, um, and that three score and that is, um, that assessment is logical reasoning. There's no reading or no writing. So it's a highly visual spatial. What that does is kind of eliminate the language barrier and give like the, uh, even plain field so that all students can, um, really demonstrate their thinking processes without having to rely on like background knowledge. Um, we also look at their historical data. So for the past year, what were their scores on S back and I ready? Um, teacher observations and again, the artifacts and portfolio. Next slide. All right, so now we're going to get into some of the curriculum work and my, um, colleague, Ms. Pascon will discuss that.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Thompson, for inviting us back to speak to all this evening. Um, so alongside our work with the testing and nomination process, we wanted to share a little bit more in depth about the curriculum development that we're doing for grades four through eight. We're using a, a variety of tools and resources to do this work. Next slide, please. Uh, we're very excited to have the opportunity to pursue some of these amazing partnerships. We are, of course, still working very closely with Dr. Eastlake for the, representing the Ranzilli Center at Yukon and she's in, in constant contact back to Joe Ranzilli and Sally Reese directly, who are very pleased with our progress so far. We've been approached by our Bloomfield community members, Donna Winnick, Nancy Bowden and Tali Miller, whose names you might be familiar with because they would like to bring the very successful Witness Stones project that has been happening in West Hartford for the past few years. A group of retired teachers from West Hartford brought it to, I believe they're doing it in the middle schools in eighth grade in West Hartford. And so we're really excited to support and facilitate the effort to bring this to Bloomfield as well. Um, we're consulting with the Norwalk Public Schools Gifted and Talented Program. In the past four years, they've completely redesigned their gifted program, their identification process and the curriculum. So we hope to learn from their experience going through the process to help give us a little leg up and get some of their, um, their, their advice along the way. We're actually meeting with the director of that program tomorrow. Um, and we're also very excited to be working with local authors. We've, um, been gifted a set of books from Joe Young and Rabenia, I hope I said that right, Rabenia McKinley. Um, so really excited to see what, how we can bring those books either into our pro, pull-out programs or to use them to support our teachers in the classroom with enrichment direct differentiation. Next slide, please, John. Thanks. So our curriculum is being developed around the Ranzilli enrichment tribe model, which we've discussed before with you. Um, you know, as a reminder, push and enrichment for all students in the classroom is focused on type one and type two activities. And for the remainder of this school year, as we do begin our pull-out program, uh, we'll be developing a lot of opportunities for type one and type two for them because we're working up to the future type three project. We'd be embarking on type three projects for next year. You really need many, many months. But this will be great because we'll kind of give everybody a leg up this year, kind of reviewing the kind of things they might have done in earlier grades, especially for the older kids, so that we can hit the ground running in the fall. Next slide, please. So one example of a push and enrichment activity, Juanita and I went together to fourth grade classrooms at Metacoma. And what looks like just a cute, fun little activity with Legos is really quite challenging and embeds several twenty-first century skills that are very prominent and are portrait of a graduate competencies. Next slide, please, John. So the challenge that we gave them was, can you fill this index card completely with the Legos you've been given? And each kid's given just a random assortment of Legos in a baggie and they're working with a partner. So they have to communicate and collaborate back and forth with their partner. And they have to really critically think through the process as they make adjustments. Maybe they, some kids realized that like very creative thinking, they could turn Legos on their side to give it a different shape. Um, so it was really interesting to watch this process. Next slide, please, John. Uh, we did a little reflection at the end, so they used those metacognitive skills, which really helps them think through their thinking processes. How well did I do? Was, what was challenging about it? What did I like about it? Uh, how well did we communicate? And then next slide, please, John. We have some pictures for you. Um, highlighting our POG competencies like collaboration, creative problem solving. They had to show their flexible and adaptive thinking along the way. One more, please, John. And some more pictures here, their communication and critical thinking. And it's, I love, like, look at the boy on the left there. He was so into it. He's looking at it like really closely examining. And we only had thirty minutes for this entire activity from the time the kids came in the door from the time we had to have them lined up to leave. So it was really great to see how quickly they got focused and jumped right in. Next slide, please, John. And I've mentioned Ranzilli Learning too before, we're using this to help us develop our curriculum. It's one piece, one tool. Um, and a, and a very large array of things that we'll be using. Uh, it really does help us facilitate the, uh, Ranzilli methodologies. It's obviously built on Joe and Sally's work. So we have the opportunities for a lot of type one exploration in this as well as type two process skills and a way to deliver curriculum for ourselves as well as to help the teachers in the classroom. Next slide, please. So I'm going to just really quickly point out a couple of the different components. I mentioned the learning profile. All kids in the pull-out program will be profiled. That'll be one of the very first activities we do with them. Next slide, please. Um, the lesson differentiation engine helps us to develop curriculum and personalize learning for each student. So, um, you know, there's just an example list there of, that's grade six, social studies. You can see African-American history and culture, civic, social action, culture, economics, et cetera. So it's a wide array of tools ready to hand out to kids. And this function really differentiation, differentiates the process for the students. Next. Uh, actually, it's just a click, I think. And here's just an example of one of these lessons. This is exploring cells. And it gives the kids the, um, the directions and the resources all embedded right there. Oh, I see what happened. Sorry. So the animation isn't working, at least not from my view. So, um, we just missed a couple of pictures in between. But so this is the, what's that?
It's not working, Jeannie, the animation. Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. So let me just explain. So this is actually the next function. So this is a seventh grade exploring cells activity that you can see. Next slide, please, John. And this is their project function, which is very open-ended. And what's great about the project function is it can be a teacher-driven, like, hey, we're all going to do this project about this one is adaptations and habitats for grades three through five. Or we'll, we'll use it for the students' type three projects and they can initiate and develop the project themselves from scratch if they wish. They can use some super starters and customize them and tweak them a little bit. Or they might be like, there's nothing in here that I want to do. I know what I want to do. And that gives us the opportunity to really let them drive the process beginning to end. All right, next slide, please, John. And we have mentioned before that, and I know, um, Dr. Thompson's really excited for us to look at some of these contests and competitions. So each one has an embedded curriculum that comes with it. Um, and, and they really each deliver very important skills and content. Invention Convention, for example, teaches students the design process. And it really has a wide range of grade levels. You can use it with starting very young. History Day is a very in-depth research process based on an annual historical theme. And it's offered to middle school and high school students. Um, after profiling the students and getting to know their interest areas, you know, are they social studies kids? Are they science kids? Are they really creative and collaborative minded? Um, we'll be introducing them to some of these different opportunities and really see which ones they'd like to pursue next year. So they'll help us decide which ones we're going to dive into first. And with the next slide, I pass it back to Juanita.
Okay, we're just going to end off with our updated timeline, so we can go on to the next slide. All right, you'll notice at the top of the chart that we have already begun our enrichment infusion going into classrooms, either leading an activity or collaborating with teachers, and that will be, um, happening on an ongoing basis. Um, the next, uh, step that we'll go into is having teachers, um, submit their Power School nomination forms. Many schools have been working on it for a week or so, a little more. And we have a deadline of March eleventh with a little bit of Google room before we begin our nomination process, which begins the week of March twenty-first. Um, after we have gone through the nomination process and we have a good idea of the numbers in each school, then we could come back together with principals and have a meeting on how that will look in each building as far as a pull-out schedule for those students. So that would happen the week of March twenty-eighth. Then, um, a part of the process is notifying parents, inviting them in whether Zoom or, um, in, in person to have an overview of the program, answer any of their questions, and then also have them accept the offer. So, um, parents must give permission for their child to receive services to formally be identified as a talented and gifted student. And then we get into spring break, so everybody gets a, a breather and can relax. And when we come back, we will officially, um, get started with those students who have been identified and work closely with them for the time that we have left, even though it's not a lot of time. We plan to go deep. We plan to really get some great work out of them and be able to, um, showcase that work with some student exhibitions the week of June sixth. And curriculum and professional development that's happening off about this, we've started with it. We've been doing it during this whole process and will continue to do it, um, moving forward. So all of this together is our way of establishing a strong foundation. Um, I think with the partnerships that you've seen, um, and all of the hard work we've been doing with testing the district and accommodating teachers and families, that, that is really our purpose to, you know, start in a way that can sustain us moving forward. So that's it for the timeline. I will, um, give it back to Ann Marie to close out.
Thank you, Juanita. And I just want to recognize these two ladies, um, Juanita Richardson and Jeannie Pascon have really, um, worked extremely hard. We meet at least three times a week for a few hours at each clip, um, to get all this up and running. Um, and they've done tremendous work outside of those meetings, along with, um, our consultant from, uh, Yukon, Dr. Eastlake. Um, I think we have a really good working team and for the benefit of our students here at Bloomfield, we're just so excited about this program starting. And that ends our report.
Thank you. Before I open it up for questions, um, just to give you a little heads up, um, Joe Young and, uh, Rabena McKinley. Joe has been doing work in the greater Hartford community since I knew him as a high school student, um, way back in the, uh, in the eighties. So, uh, very familiar with Joe and his work. And, uh, Rabena McKinley was actually, she was the wife of Leon McKinley. Uh, many of you know that Leon is a, a former principal, uh, in, um, in the greater Hartford area, became principal, uh, at our old junior high at the high school and, uh, was his sons went and graduated from Bloomfield High. So they have, uh, decades of, uh, experience in, uh, giving back to the Bloomfield community. So, um, you've got, you've got two good ones.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Harris, I just wanted to share with you, this is The Weaver Birds. This is a book that, um, Mrs. McKinley wrote.
Yeah.
Um, and these are the Kemet series.
Yeah.
From Mr. Young. And we have purchased these, um, for the start of our, um, some of our pull-out and grade levels with, um, Juanita and Jeannie. So we're very, very excited about what's happening here.
The season, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, ladies, for that, uh, presentation. Uh, I'm really impressed with the progress, um, of the talented and gifted program. I know you guys haven't been working on it, um, for a very long time, but, um, the progress is impressive. Um, but I'm not surprised, given this dynamic group of women who are leading the charge here. Um, you guys are doing an excellent job. Um, I'm excited to. And I'm excited to hear that we may be bringing in the Witness Stone project into this. I've spoken with Nancy and Tali as well. So I'm really glad that we're exploring that as an option as well in, in this curriculum. So thank you, ladies, for your hard work and the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Fryman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies, wonderful presentation. I can just feel your excitement. And as I am listening to your presentation, you know, I think it made us all here very exciting for the wonderful things that are taking place in our school. Joe Young, wonderful asset. I've worked with Joe for many, many, many years. I remember his original Joe, the Joe's longest cartoon in the world was put together by Joe Young, if I'm correcting that, Mr. Harris?
You're correct.
World record, but Joe Young has done quite a lot for the community. The one thing that I did want to mention, and hopefully at some point, hopefully, board members will be able to, actually, when things hopefully get better in our community with COVID, actually be able to go up to some of the schools and see some of the presentations and see some of the exhibits that our young people do, so we could actually have a more of a firsthand participation in what they're doing. So once again, I am very excited, I'm sure, just the rest of the board members are, in this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vogel, ask a guy. You're muted.
Okay, so I'm off now. Yes, the West Hartford program, the Whitney Stone project, I have to say, I do not know that project. I would like to hear from the two teachers. By the way, the avatars are great. They're, you know, I'm sure they're interesting to the young people. I'd like to hear why we think that that would be a benefit to our young people in Bloomfield. Also, have you had any resistance from teachers or teachers' unions around the professional development to introduce the Renshaw learning program? And my third question.
Yep.
Then you can respond. Do we have a maximum number of students that we're accepting into the Talented and Gifted Program? Or is that open based on the performance of the students?
Since it's our first time through, and I'm going to answer your question, your third question first. And Juanita and Jeanie jump in if you'd like to after. We don't have a set number because, obviously, this is our first time through. And this is the first time, I mean, we've taken on the identification and nomination of grades four through eight. In the future, it would only be one grade, grade three, coming through the cycle each year. So as, as you know, we've tested six hundred and seventy students. We have two teachers. We're servicing grades four through eight. So we have to be cognizant of that fact. But we also want to make sure, and that's why we have spread out the identification process to not only include kind of the, the high stakes testing and assessments, but a child's classwork. We are talking to our Unified Arts teachers. If they see a student who they really recognize as a gifted artist or musician, and maybe not so great in academics, but they have all these other gifts. So to answer your question, we don't have a set number. This is our first time through, and we really want to see who our students are, you know, what their likes are, what their strengths are. And then from there, we'll have to determine, you know, who comes into the program. However, Dr. Thompson, right from the beginning, wanted to, the two models, the whole school model and the pullout model. So the whole school model means that our teachers, through professional development and through them going into classrooms, offer all of our teachers in grades four through eight the opportunity to learn how to really differentiate for our higher learners, how to extend those lessons, how to have them go and, you know, study on their own or do more research. So we're trying to hit it from all angles to make sure all of our students have that opportunity to really grow and stretch. Now, the second one, I forgot.
Well, I'll speak to the
Okay.
question. I think it was, is there any pushback? We haven't really rolled it out for teachers to use on their own yet. We're hoping to, that to be a part of the professional development plan for next year. So we really want to be able to get into the PD schedule so that we can roll that out gradually. But the approach that we want to take, if we want to show teachers that this is a way to help them differentiate, differentiate, right? They have to do it anyway. So here's a tool with all of these resources at your fingertips that can get, give students what they need at their level immediately. So we'll be very strategic with how we present that to teachers. We're willing to go into the classroom to show them how to use it. So we want it to be like non-threatening, gradual, and collaborative. All right. And I think, Jeanie, if you want to speak to the Witness Stone one.
So the Witness Stone Project in West Hartford is really like studying the history of the town. And I believe, and I haven't honestly, even though one of the women who runs it in West Hartford was a close friend and colleague of mine for a long time. I haven't paid that much attention to the whole process, but I know part of it has to do with going to send the stone part is going to look at gravestones and really diving into the history of, of the people through, through the times. You know, I'd be happy to send the board the article that Donna Winnet sent me in regards to, you know, what's happening currently in West Hartford. It's been going on for several years. There's both been an in-school piece, but there's also been like through the pandemic, I think this is maybe the second or third time they're offering online classes to anyone, free online classes to anyone who'd like to participate. It's like a series of, of like, you know, weekly meetings or something like that a few times. You know, but I'm sure Donna, Nancy, and Tali could probably tell us better than I can, because I haven't, she's actually presenting it to us next week. I haven't seen that much of it yet myself, but I know it was highly, highly acclaimed in, in West Hartford.
Yes. And can we receive the, the article?
Yes, of course.
About. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So this is not, I've been listening since we had the presentation some months ago. This is not the traditional, what people think of gifted and talented, this program.
It has several dimensions to it. It does have a very traditional Talented and Gifted Program, where students who have been identified and nominated and parents have given permission will be pulled out and receive small group instruction around project-based learning in those areas of critical thinking, communication, adaptability. But then there's also that other component of it where our teachers, Juanita and Jeanie, will do professional development to help all of our teachers learn the skills and how to really have students think out of the box. And we'll also go in and share, you know, lessons with a fourth grade class or a fifth grade class, something that they may be studying in social studies or reading about. They can do an extension lesson. So it's a kind of a combination of the real traditional Talented and Gifted Programs along with this whole school motto that really has been made very famous by our own UConn professors, who are helping guide us in our, in directing how we formulate our program.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
I have my hand up, Mr. Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you had, I thought you hadn't taken it down. Okay.
No, no, no. I took it down and then I put it back up. I think what I, what I'd like, what I'd like to say is, is I, I like the vision of lifting up the entire school body. And then by so doing, identifying those students are obviously gifted and talented or talented and gifted. So that model's useful. I'm thinking about the fact, though, that we're not very well resourced as it relates to the two teachers who are providing the leadership for an entire district. So as a board, I think we need to address ourselves to, how do we recalibrate our resources such that we can be supportive of this effort? It seems to me that we need to focus on this effort, to be extremely supportive of it, so that we can support our teachers, support superintendent, and support all of those persons who are a part of it. I like the fact that we have looked at our citizen, the global citizen is the, 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 we're aligned. Our, our objectives for our students have been aligned with the program that's being put in place to lift them up, for want of a better phrase. So this, this is exciting work, but I don't think we will see the results for another three, four, maybe five years, I guess. But I think we need to talk about and look at how we, as I said, recalibrate resources to be able to be supportive of this particular effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If I might just, I want to really thank you for those comments and just, I don't know if you're aware of this, and we might have said it last time. One of Joe Renshaw's famous things is, "A rising tide lifts all ships." So I like the fact that you just kept mentioning lifting. That is definitely something that the school-wide enrichment model intends to do, is lift everybody up through this process.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving along. Cave updates.
Before you get
Oh, you're not finished, Dr. T.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
We have on the agenda, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The 19th for discussion, possible action.
I'm sorry. I jumped right from old business right to the end. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. In the past few years, America has been undergoing a great awakening when it comes to race, inclusion, in teaching our children culturally relevant and contextual history. Juneteenth enacted as a federal holiday by Congress in 2021 is such an example. African Americans enslaved in Galveston, Texas first learned of their freedom on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after the emancipation enacted by President Abraham Lincoln. June nineteenth has since become known as Juneteenth. And the day is celebrated at the end of slavery in the United States. Juneteenth became a state holiday in Texas in nineteen eighty. And subsequently, several other states took similar action. In 2021, Congress voted to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. Governor Ned Lamont issued a proclamation last June declaring June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, Juneteenth Day in Connecticut. The importance of Juneteenth has significant resonance and relevance in the town of Bloomfield. Our suburban school district is a unique one in Connecticut in that the majority of our student population is comprised of African American and those of West Indian descent. I recommend adoption of the resolution.
Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education recognize Juneteenth, June nineteenth, as a school district holiday beginning in academic year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Again.
It's been properly moved and second. Comments? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Vogel, ask a guy. You have your hand up.
Yes, I do. I, I'm not sure if, if Dr. Thompson read from that. There was a document that was sent to us without.
I sent that to, to the board, just to give some context for discussion to this evening.
Oh, I see, because there was no name on the document.
Apologize for that.
There was no name on the document, so I did not know who wrote that document. But I, I want to just point out that as we speak about ourselves as African people, it is important, the language that we use, because we're forced to use English. It's not a good language to express yourself in or to speak about ourselves as Africans, as black people. Why? Because much of the words that are used in relationship to us are pathological. So that, for example, I think in the first two or three lines, I, I read, it said African American slaves. Now, that's like an oxymoron. If you're an African American, you know, you're African and you're American, but you're not a slave. We were enslaved. And it's important that when we speak about ourselves, we're conscious of that. Because if we keep perpetuating this view that black people are mere slaves, then everybody else can do that. So as we speak and as we construct sentences, I think it's important that we place ourselves in a context of our humanity. So I just needed to make that comment.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? For those of you wondering how this might impact the school calendar or if it's going to impact the school calendar. We haven't gone as far as June nineteenth in our school calendar in a long, long time. So we are basically out of school, but I believe it's important. That's why I said to Dr. Thompson, let's put it on the agenda. Because I believe it's important to acknowledge Juneteenth as a holiday for the Bloomfield schools. You know, as I understand it, it's already being celebrated at a council level, and we know what's going on with the state. So it's I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it. So other comments? Other comments? Other comments? All those, okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Given the same rights? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously? Okay, that concludes our, our basic agenda. Just quickly, Cave Updates. Cave is going to be going out on a retreat in about two weeks. Additionally, the NSBA convention is coming up in San Diego, March thirty-first. I will be attending as a representative from Cave. And we'll be out in San Diego, maybe experiencing some warm weather until the fourth or the fifth of April. And that concludes Cave Updates. Board comments, Mr. Ike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to, again, congratulate Mr. Robinson. Secondly, Mr. Malecki, I guess, has been promoted to head the Human Resources. And lastly, I want to recognize Principal on assignment Jesse White, now interim principal of Bloomfield High School. And hopefully, we can get rid of that interim before his name. Mr. White is an outstanding educator, and I, and he will be a standing academic leader for Bloomfield High School. And lastly, I want to congratulate that young student again, who's taking college-level classes as a sophomore. Would it be possible, let's get a list of, or a number of how many students we have at the, at the high school level or even at the middle school level, due to high level, who are taking college-level classes? That's outstanding. That's something we should promote heavily throughout the community. And those are my comments. I wish everybody the best as we head into the last quarter of the school year. Have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I guess I just basically want to
Um, I guess I just basically want to congratulate, want to congratulate all the presenters. They all did an excellent job tonight. I appreciate all the information that we received was very knowledgeable. Um, the other thing that I really want to say that I really have concerns on was brought up tonight. But I just want to express my concerns about some things. Um. We talked about the mask mandate. It already been passed by us, you know, so we're staying there, whatever and stuff. But. I think we can see how divided that issue is, you know, when it comes to, when it comes to the public. Um, I guess all I really want to say about that, and I I believe that we are doing this, that we need to look at. We need to look at both sides, but um. You know, and um, and politics or probably in life, majority rules. So, you know, we have to go by what we have to go by. Um, the other thing that um I really want to um talk about is um the budget. And I don't want to get into a whole lot of stuff. It's just that. At our last, you know, when we approved, I think I was the only one that said nay. Um, but it's not that, it's not that I want to be disagreeable. It's just that I personally feel that. Like, and I'm gonna beat it to ours. I just feel and believe that we're just spending so much money. On um, on 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 salary that's going over seventy percent, I believe it was. But again, majority rules, and so you gotta live with it. Um. And the other thing that bothered me, and this, I'm sorry, but this really, really bothers me, is the transportation cost increase. I have been wrapping my head around this. This is our last two board meetings, and I'm just keep saying to myself. You know, the first year when the pandemic come out, you would have think we would have seen a a big decrease. The second year, you know, you know, things slowed down, like other things, things getting back to normal, well, not normal, because things are not normal yet. But um, still. Um. You know, it's like people are saying, well, that second year had to make up for that. In my opinion, definitely had to have to make up for that first year, and I just don't see it. I don't think we should have. I think they should be giving us back money, not us giving, not us increasing them, but that's just me. Um. The other thing I want to talk about, and I don't know if this was um bought up. You know, to other individuals, you know, private or anything, but I know at one of our last meetings. Um, we had NBC News there and 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 one of our board members asked, you know, why would they do it? Nobody never. Nobody never answered the question. So I just want to know, was there ever any? A follow-up to that? You can send it to me in email, send it, send it to all of us an email if you like. But, you know, we have, we know they were there because they showed up on our screen, but nobody never, never responded. So. With all of that, I just want to say, I'm not trying to be negative. I'm just trying to do what I can for the people that were. That um elected me to serve as a board member for the town of Bloomfield. Not for the Republican Party, not for the Democratic Party, but for the town of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Ms. Vogel, ask a guy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to uh wish Mr. Robinson well in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first, I want to say, uh, Mr. Moore, we did get a follow-up email. I'm not sure if you saw that. Um, but I believe we did get one um as to why Channel Thirty was there. Um, I I don't remember why. I think it was some kind of bot or something, just listening for buzzwords or something, but. Um, also just want to mention, as far as the mask mandate, um, you know, the the last uh meeting that we had. I want to say I did struggle. Um, I did have a lot of questions. I had a lot of comments, um, and I think as a board. We did our due diligence. We talked it out. We had a really robust discussion. I do believe, you know, we made the best decision. Um, you know, for the greatest amount of people. What's the quote greatest good for the greatest amount of people? Ye- yes. Um, and I think we did that, and you know, a couple more weeks, we just got to hang on a little longer. Um, you know, my kids are hounding me. They're saying, Mom, you're on the board, you know, get rid of the masks. I said, well, I have to do what's best for everyone. So. Um, I do just want everyone to know that we didn't take any decision that we make lightly. Uh, we did do our due diligence. We. Did have discussions about it, and there were questions that were asked and comments that were made. So um, you know. Anytime you want to come to our meetings, please do, and you know. Participate in the public comment. Um, I don't think the first time that we talked about the mask, I don't think we had any public comment. Um, from people, uh, but it was on the agenda, so we do give that opportunity. Also, congratulations to Mr. Robinson. Again, we're truly going to miss you and those five AM phone calls about no school. Um, so, you know, enjoy your retirement again. Um, congratulations to uh Mr. Malecki and Mr. White. Um. Just to echo what um Mr. Ike said, yes, I'm I'm hoping that we can remove the interim uh from that, but that's just my my personal opinion. Um, thanks again for our our student presenters, um, as well as um everyone who presented this evening. Um, let's see. Oh, yes, uh, Condoleezza Coleman. Um. You know, congratulations to her on her uh award, Distinguished Young Woman Award. So that that is very commendable and and that's. Fabulous, and she can um hopefully be a mentor and someone that our our younger ladies and the school system can look up to. Uh, and with that, happy uh International Women's Day to all the ladies out there. Um, and don't forget to turn your clocks uh ahead on Sunday. That ends my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you always say, as we come to the end, almost everybody has already said what we want to say, so we thank you all for our. Our Board of Ed members. Another excellent meeting. We've um had some wonderful speakers tonight and some great presentations. I also, today is Women's Day, so yes. Um, we do want to send out our congratulations to Condoleezza Coleman, our senior at the Blueville High School. As the twenty twenty-two. Recipient for the Distinguished Young Woman of Connecticut Award, and hopefully she's watching Blueville Access TV. You'll see her photo plus some information about her award on TV and hopefully her and her family and all her friends will see it. John Robinson, my goodness gracious, what can I say to keep you here? Um, he has a smile. He already has some plans, I can see, for the next several years of what he wants to do. But John, thank you on behalf of myself. I want to thank you once again for all your hard work for the district and. I personally appreciate it. Um. Lastly, uh, please remember on Thursday evening, we will be make, the Board of Education will be making a presentation. In front of the Town Council regarding our upcoming budget. So hopefully, um. Folks either will watch it on television or even stop by to um. Um, see the presentation. With that said, um, hopefully things are getting much better and um. That's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Things are getting much better. But yet there was still, we still had a COVID case today. So it's not gone yet. And uh. So I'm uh, I'm glad we made the decision to maintain the mask until March thirty-first. I'm gonna say this, uh, Mr. Moore. You know, I've been on this board for twelve years, almost twelve years, and uh. I think you're about the only one that ever referenced Republicans and Democrats, because I think we operate pretty much as a nonpartisan board. We don't mention that often, and we don't vote in that vein either. So uh. I, you know, I'm I'm get offended by those remarks talking about that we are acting in uh. Political uh veins, because we just don't do that. Um. As far as the uh, Mr. Robinson, yes, I'm very sorry to see you go, John. You know how much of a value you've been to the district, to me, and uh to a lot of people. Um, but is um. He's not gone yet, folks. He's going to be around until pretty much the end of March. So changes that will be taking place will not take place until pretty much the end of March. So uh. Uh, you know, before others will be stepping into uh different uh shoes. So we can hold our uh applause for folks until then. Um. I again, thank you uh. The talented and gifted folks for your presentation. Um. I'm really excited for this, for the start of this program and uh for the success of this program. Um. Mr. Benabi, thank you for uh bringing those two outstanding students and um. Yep, and Mr. Ike, we're going to give you a a report. There are, we have a lot of students taking college classes, and uh, so. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at the good works uh that they're doing at Jams. As well as the high school. So having said all of that, Mr. Ike.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back in.
And properly moved the second, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.